Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October fifteenth. We're going to start with a call to order.
Okay, Chair Stewart is absent, Vice Chair Tidy Zamora is absent, Commissioner John Dynan, Commissioner Michael Alterman.
Here.
Commissioner Natasha Bosso filling in as chair.
Here.
And Commissioner Alternate Steve Link.
Here.
And Commissioner Alternate Ben Rubin. I also want to make an announcement that the Channel Two visual is not working, but the audio is for the people out there in TV world.
Thank you. We'll start with the conflict of interest. Any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any agenda, on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Bearing none, we'll move on. Public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, or as stated by the presiding officer, and cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence and make sure your comments are directed to the Planning Commission members.
Good evening. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Karen Canrato. I live at five twenty-four Hope Road. I'm here to just let you know that I oppose the Riverwalk project, and I'm hoping that you look at it carefully, continue to look at it carefully as it comes closer to time. Look at. For many reasons, the Riverwalk project is not a good idea, as you, I'm sure of, are well aware through all of the agency reports that you've received, that have been received. This is prime agricultural land. It's incredibly productive. It has easy access to water, and it's next to the Stanislaus River. It's on a floodplain that has flooded since New Maloney's was built. The water table is very high, and in my opinion, unsuitable for building. Before the New Maloney's Dam was built, there were waterspouts, little boils, that came up in the middle of the field that was indicative of imminent flooding. There are city service issues that need to be addressed, water, sewer, traffic, lights, emergency personnel and vehicles. And often, I hear comments about that will be taken care of through the North Corridor or through this agreement with the county or things like that. But I think there's an issue of when those will be addressed and when you can have better traffic roads. There's increased, already increased rates for water and sewer, and I think the discussion of more coming. Wildlife corridors would be interrupted and destroyed, and therefore, the animals that live along the river and travel across this land would be diminished. The one thing I want to note is the general plan that has not yet been approved. But the Riverwalk that has not yet been approved isn't even in the process to be considered as a pending project. It's not even advanced enough for that. And perhaps it should not be included in the housing element. If it is in the housing element, then perhaps the ballot initiative should also be included. As you are aware, there is a ballot measure that passed that will be brought forward in the 2026 general election. And I think for fairness and neutrality, if the Riverwalk information is going to be included in the general plan, then I would think that the additional information should also be included. So again, I hope that all of you think very carefully about this project before it comes before you, so that you have the full information. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, you want to unmute their mic?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Jamie Agers. I live within the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County, adjacent to Riverbank and within the proposed Riverwalk project area. I would like to thank the Planning Director for giving me advance notice that the draft housing element was going to be included in your agenda packet for tonight's meeting. I have been reviewing it and intend to submit comments within the thirty-day comment period. My question for you this evening is, what is the status of the general plan update, which is also coming to conclusion of its planning period? Thank you.
Thank you. No more public comments. I will close the public comment period. Moving on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single acting of the Planning Commission Board unless requested by an individual Planning Commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission Board. So we have item two point one, two point two, and two point three. Two point one is posted in the agenda. The agenda for the October fifteenth Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards, Post Office, City website, and emailed to the library on October tenth, 2024. Item two point two, approval of the October fifteenth, 2024 agenda. Item two point three, approval of the September seventeenth, 2024 Planning Commission meetings having been read by the individual Planning Commissioners and standing approved as submitted. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve items two point one through two point three. I was in attendance as an alternate for the September seventeenth meeting. I just wanted to note that.
Okay, roll call. Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Moving on to the Planning Commission public hearings. We have item three point one, draft six-cycle housing element update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Miguel Galvez, contract planner with J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning. Also with me this evening is David Niskin, and also a contract planner with J.B. Anderson. We're here to present the draft six-cycle housing element update. I've included in this presentation, on the PowerPoint presentation, a Spanish translation, which is in blue text. So you'll see black text, which is in English, and blue text, which is in Spanish. Just a quick refresh. I know we've had a number of meetings on the housing element. The housing element is one of seven elements of the general plan. Other cities may elect to use optional elements. The six-cycle housing element covers the period of June thirtieth, 2023, through December thirty-first, 2031. The draft housing element is available now for a thirty-day public review period, October fifteenth through November fourteenth, 2024. The State of California Department of Housing and Community Development is tasked with reviewing all state housing elements for compliance with the state housing law. So after the public comment period, staff will be presenting, will be submitting the draft housing element to the state for their review. The update process has included workshops. You know, we held one community workshop. We've held a stakeholder workshop. We've also held presentations, update presentations, progress presentations for the planning commission and city council. And today is the formal announcement of the availability of the sixth-cycle housing element for starting of the thirty-day public review period. In the update, we examine housing needs. We examined inventory of available property that can be used to help meet the housing needs of the community as identified by the regional housing needs allocation. We reviewed housing policies and programs and provided updates and recommendations in there. The draft public housing element will be presented to the city council on November twelfth, 2024. And at that time, we'll be asking the city council to authorize staff to submit the draft housing element, six-cycle, along with any comments that are submitted during the thirty-day review period as approved in consultation with city staff. As I mentioned, once the comment period ends on November fourteenth, staff will review all comments and make amendments and track changes format. That's the way that the state wants it. This edited version is then presented to the state to start their ninety-day public, or ninety-day review period. At the conclusion of the ninety-day review period, HCD will provide a comment letter identifying areas that need to be addressed to meet the state's housing law requirements. Edits that are made to the draft house element will be conducted by staff, and those will be presented to the Planning Commission and city council for adoption. The adopted house elements then relate back to the state for a determination of compliance with state housing law. At the end, the state does a final review, and we expect, we're hoping that they will say, you know what, you've met all the state law requirements. You're in compliance with the state housing law. Briefly, the housing element contents include the following components. They're listed there. Introduction, a community profile, housing needs analysis, affirmatively furthering fair housing. It also discusses financial resources, housing constraints, energy conservation opportunities, a review of the prior housing element, a housing action plan, and inclusion appendices that have supporting information about our journey thus far. And the journey really started with the regional housing needs allocation. Once again, the city is required to plan for the state projected housing needs that were adopted under the local council governments, the locally adopted regional housing needs allocation. Overall, the city has to plan to provide opportunities for the development of three thousand five hundred and ninety-one housing units, of which one thousand six hundred and forty-two housing units must serve the very low and low-income households. That's where you see the nine seventy and the six seventy-two together. So again, three thousand five hundred and ninety-one units, and of that, about sixteen hundred units have to be, have to serve the low-income household. Here's a copy of Table six dash nine, which illustrates the city's ability to meet the RENA by income category. The allocation to be met is in blue text, as I mentioned a minute ago. The city's holding capacity is in red text. You can see on the bottom, the city's current housing capacity is three thousand three hundred and eighty-four units. Of that, about twelve hundred can be allocated to the low-income areas. Then you've got moderate and above moderate, but our key challenge is to try to meet the housing needs of the low-income areas. The shortfall at the bottom here, in the purple, is that we need to accommodate four hundred and thirty-six low-income housing units and three hundred and fifty-four moderate-income housing units. We exceed the above-moderate category there of seven hundred and four. So that's really the challenge when we look at our housing sites inventory. What can the city do to help meet the housing needs of the low and very low-income categories? To meet this shortfall, the state has identified the following criteria in looking at sites. The sites have to be suitable and available. The utilities have to be available, city utilities, city sewer, water, storm drainage, and they have to meet the regional housing needs allocation income categories. The zoning has to be appropriate. The lot has to meet state law requirements that deals with density and parcel size. And it also has to meet fair housing requirements, and that goes with, you know, no concentration of low-income areas or low-income housing in specific areas concentrated within the city. With input from the community, staff identified a number of sites that have the potential to meet the RENA's low-income categories. Here's a list of properties. These are listed by a system's parcel number that can be developed at a minimum density of twenty units per acre to satisfy the RENA low-income category. The State of California has made a determination that apartments that are developed at twenty units per acre will, are sufficient to meet the very low and low-income category. And so that's important. I want to say policy issue that this is going to have to adopt is when it comes to meeting our arena numbers. When it comes to apartments, we need to at least have a minimum density of twenty units per net acre. All of these parcels that are listed here can accommodate one thousand six hundred and fifty-six low-income units to meet the RENA's allocation, as mentioned. Here's a map of the properties identified that can be rezoned to R3 or upzone or to mixed-use. One of the issues, or one of the strategies we're looking at is to ask the city to consider rezoning properties that perhaps are commercial to a mixed-use zoning classification. And the mixed-use zoning classification will allow multifamily development by right, again, at a minimum density of twenty units per acre. So these are some of the properties. The darker properties are those that receive lots of interests, or I should say votes. You say, yeah, these are properties that we should, you know, certainly look at to help meet the arena numbers for the low and very low-income categories. The lighter colors receive less votes, and they didn't receive any votes, but we identified their cuss, which is outlined in red there. I want to focus on a couple of the key goals and policies. Staff review the housing goals and policies. And policy one point two, there at the bottom, is to maintain an inventory vacant and other utilized residential lands. This will require a comprehensive plan to rezone some of the candidate sites to serve the regional housing needs allocation by income category. So upon adoption of the house element, staff is going to be tasked to identify which properties are going to rezone and so require additional subsequent effort to look at that subsequent public hearings and things like that to rezone these candidate sites. As I mentioned, we're also looking at amending the, not only rezoning, but also amending the land use designation, the zoning district, the zoning ordinance. When it comes to mixed-use housing, as I mentioned, the ability to develop multifamily housing together with commercial is whether it's commercial on the bottom and residential on top or side by side. So one thing is to amend the zoning map. The other thing is to amend the zoning code. And here, we're talking about, to be more specific, to amend the zoning district permitted uses to identify a minimum density of twenty units per net acre. And that'll be, when an applicant comes to the counter, it'll be something for staff to kind of keep in mind as they meet with the applicants. Like, you know, you're proposing multifamily. We want to make sure that you meet our minimum density standards. They can be higher, but for us to meet our regional housing needs allocation, we want to let you know these are some of the requirements upfront. When it comes to inclusionary zoning, that was discussed at some of the workshops. But until we get clear direction from the city council, majority of the city council, this is just an option that can be included at final adoption. There has been interest about inclusionary zoning for particular single-family development. And when it comes to single-family development, that would require a certain number of units be set aside for low-income residents, and there's different programs that exist throughout the valley and some that can be developed to give. Usually, it's moderate-income households, an opportunity to get into the single-family housing world, if you will. Under policy five point one, it's a new policy. It's a requirement for the city to partner with local jurisdictions to host a housing summer, a housing summit, excuse me, or a housing fair. And that's to provide a series of workshops, whether for new properties or landlords and, you know, or someone that wants to look at, what does it take to get into, to get into a mortgage? How much can I afford? Or working with different nonprofit housing developers, what can they, what can the residents do to apply for some of these programs? So it's kind of like a housing summit. Come and learn about housing, how to be a good landlord, how to be a tenant, a good tenant, you know, how to improve your credit. And then something that can be regional, you know, we usually invite bankers, mortgage companies. We invite builders and a variety of folks. Other cities usually participate. So looking at the timeline, today starts the thirty-day public review period. As I mentioned, it ends on November fourteenth. The next meeting, on November twelfth, actually, council will be asked to authorize staff to submit the draft house element with public comments identifying track changes format to HCD. That's what they want. After submitted, HCD requires a ninety-day review period to review the draft housing element, and they provide comments to the city. By and large, statewide, the cities usually receive a comment letter from the HCD as anywhere from ten to twenty pages long. It's quite extensive. Staff then will revise the housing element to address the HCD comments. And then the final draft is scheduled for a public hearing before both the Planning Commission and city council for final adoption. Finally, the housing element is sent back to the state for final compliance review. So that takes us to about April twenty twenty-five. But you can see the dates that we've listed. There's no formal action required this meeting. Staff encourages the commission to open up the public hearing. But really, the intent was to begin the public review process. This is a draft housing element. Staff kind of formed it. We have a team of staff. But it's not our document. It's a community's document. We ask you to participate, to review, to comment on it, to put your fingerprints on it, you know, your thoughts. And once the comments are submitted, they can be submitted to Josh Mann here at City Hall, or they can be submitted on the web link there at riverbankhousing@riverbank.org. Staff will be preparing a final Staff will be preparing a final document that gets submitted to the state. But I was saying. The document here, although has coil binding, it's not set in stone, it's. It's living, it's breathing, so take a look at it. Give us your comments on it. That would be helpful, this is a community document and we encourage your participation. Again, please submit comments by November fourteenth. Twenty twenty-fourth. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available to respond to questions. After the public hearing. You know, we're available to answer questions at that time as well. If there's any questions, we're available.
Can anyone else any question? Are different cities on a different timelines within the state?
Yes, actually, the state has divided the. The different council governments into different areas. Because this is a lot of work for HCD to read, so they. They kind of have Southern California, the LA area, San Francisco, they kind of staged them all, so we're all under different. Timelines and Central Valley is usually the last, we usually get saddled with them. In my opinion, the most regional house needs allocation. And that's kind of like leftover from what the other. Council governments don't want to do or. Choose not to do.
I have a comment, I want to thank staff for getting copies of this to us. A few days in advance, so we had time to review it, that was great, thank you.
So who initiates a rezon or an upzone? Does the property owner have to do that or? The staff do it if they see the potential of that being a multi-use and then? Does it change the value of that person's property?
That's a good question, it can be done a number of ways. If you own a property, you can take the initiative to submit an application to rezon or to amend the general plan. When it comes to the housing sites that are identifying the house element. That's something that staff will take the initiative to do. They will select the property, all this is going to be. It'll go through a general plan amendment, rezoning, public hearings. It'll involve the public, the property owners as well. And the intent again is to help meet the regional housing needs allocation for the city. There's due processes followed and. It'll be up to staff to follow up on that.
Oh, for the the housing summit, who would? Who would coordinate such an event? Like that, is that something the city does or industry people would do that?
The city usually does that city staff, I would expect. Our housing staff person here, Letizia, to help. With that. But more importantly, I see that as a regional effort, it would require coordination with like the county. The city of Modesto, because they're also. There's no opportunity for them to benefit and serve their clients as well, so it should be a team effort. So from the city, I would expect someone from. The housing staff here.
So. Who qualifies to be someone that can comment on this? Jamie said on her call a minute ago that she lives in unincorporated area of the county, can?
Anyone can come on.
Outside of the area, comment on this?
Anyone can comment on the housing element, whether you live inside the city or outside the city and in the unincorporated area. You know, to respond to the question earlier today is. Is the Riverwalk specific plan? Incorporated into the housing element? Since the property is outside of the city limits, we do not factor that in to help meet arena numbers. We acknowledge that it's coming up, but we're not counting on it to meet our, the regional housing needs allocation. So it's not necessarily a. We don't have a program to incorporate that. But anyone can comment on it.
I have a question. I believe it was table, it looks like B one dash ten. This is, you know, it has the parcel numbers, the acres, you mentioned that. Twenty units per net acre is considered, that meets the criteria to be considered. Affordable.
Yes.
So that doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration, you know, the, if it's apartments, what the rents will actually be, whether or not because rents have gone up, so. It's really just the units per acre that is kind of required to consider it affordable.
That's very true. Someone can very well develop that twenty units per acre and make a market rate and they're not affordable, and we still get credit for them under state law. And state law says, you know, usually people do like. A lesser density, like fifteen or sixteen units, or you're doing twenty. To make that pencil out, sometimes you have to go higher and usually the rents are cheaper where there's higher density.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I will open up the public comment period. Is there any public comments on the draft? Yes, come on up to the podium. Please state your name.
Hi, this is Vivian Lopez. I reside on Roselle Avenue. So I was just thinking about the information that he was presenting right now, Mr. Galvez. And he said about the very low. And then the low. Area for the arena. To be able to qualify, and so right now he just mentioned, I know it's twenty units per acre. And so what if we don't get enough? Input or buy-in. From developers. For to reach or attain that very low to low. Will the state? Reprimand the city for that, I was just curious to know. What if we don't reach, because it is very difficult to. Be able to reach the affordability housing, which is thirty percent of a person's income.
That's a very good question, I'm going to go to the next slide here. Which is. This is Stanislaus area median area income. For twenty twenty-three, a family of four. The median income is ninety-two thousand six hundred. If you have a family of four, I'll just say. Low income is sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So apartments are built. And they're not rented or rentable to folks that are in that income category. A couple of things, I kind of have seen that happen. Is that the apartments will be built, but not all of the apartments are have low-income rents. A portion of them will. And some of the apartments may be developed to different standards, instead of. Marble or granite countertops, it might be Formica. So the the standards are different. You know, when it comes to home, instead of a thirty-year. Roof, it might be a twenty-year roof, so there's different ways that. Developers can use to reduce the cost that they have to. Assume to provide these housing units. At the end. Our goal is to provide housing. You know, I, for me, working in this industry, you know, one thing is always providing housing opportunities. I think the other part of it is really helping people raise their income, you know, that's. Like a second. Foot, if you will, to someone walking into housing. Should the housing be available? They should have adequate income to. To afford that and there should be programs for that. Unfortunately, the state doesn't require us to do that, it's more. Different to. Local businesses and things like that.
Yes, go ahead.
Vivian Lopez again, so I'm just curious and I'm wondering that. When we do have developers come in that are going to. Build, have a build, build a housing project. Is it possible to, for the city? To require that they have. A certain percentage of the homes be for a low-income. Population. I'm just wondering if. If that's, if that's something that Riverbank can do, is that something that other cities do? That's my question.
With your permission, I will respond. Many local jurisdictions are able to procure funding. Whether it's the state or the federal government. That subsidize. Gap financing, if you will. In exchange for this financial assistance. The developers are required through an affordable housing covenant. To make the units affordable. Also to rent them to long-term residents, so these are affordability commoners that run with the land, usually those are good for fifty-five years. So. It's important to have a housing element that's up to date, because you're then eligible to apply for some of these state. Financing opportunities, usually there's tax credits, there's. A number of housing opportunities. That the city can pursue. It would require the city to do annual monitoring to go and actually. Look at people's, you know, income statements and see what their rents are, what their contractor, contractor rents are. To make sure they are meeting the letter of the law for any affordability commoners that are associated with the development. That comes through any type of subsidized financing.
Actually, may I ask for clarification there, so it sounds like what you're saying is. There are ways that the city could potentially through their either municipal code or zoning ordinance. Sort of mandate a portion of it, but it requires, number one. Housing element to be current and also. Accounting with the builder, so generally it's like a state or federal funded program that would provide money for the city to. Subsidize to the developers to ensure that they can. Make these houses. This housing elements affordable and. To people that are in those lower incomes to go to it. So it's a, it's a thing with the state and the city would have to get aligned with that.
Yeah, I think there's two, two different ideas here, one is. Financial assistance through the state and federal governments. And those require affordable rents. Affordable rented to long-term residents. The other is like an inclusionary housing policy. That says, you know, certain number have to be. Whether single-family homes or apartments have to be set aside for people that are low-income. And these are discussions that usually take place when people are submitting applications at the counter or. Or maybe with staff in advance, you say, hey, we're looking at this. And that's why we're saying, you know, welcome to our housing element. Here are some of the things that we're looking to provide to our residents in our community. And, you know, one of the good things that the city has is the small. Small homes ordinance, or. Actually, there's a number of developers that I've spoken with that are interested in developing tiny homes. In our community, and that goes a long way to really meeting. You know, they're tiny homes, but they're single-family, they're detached housing. And they provide a variety of benefits and the city should be commended for really having that type of. Force site really to reach out in advance of a lot of these. Zoning code amendments and rezoning, so. It's an additional opportunity for people to get into the home ownership.
Thank you, another thing, I'm just reiterating to make sure I understand this well. The housing element, you know, we've been given this reading number from, you know, of our goals. Responsibility of the city is to make sure the land is available to reach those goals, it is not the responsibility of the city to ensure that. Those houses are built. Is that correct?
You're absolutely correct. I sound like a broken record, I feel that. The cities were not required to build the units. The cities are required to identify land where the units can be built by the private side. The city can certainly pursue. As I said, federal and state funding that will help that, but. Usually they partner up with a. A nonprofit affordable housing developer to do that. Yeah, the city is not required to the building, it's only just to make the land. Zone where it can accommodate that. That type of housing.
I get that question a lot as well, you know, why is the city doing this, why is the city doing that? Developers doing this, the city is just making sure they comply, so that's a similar question, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, I will close the public comment period. And we don't need a motion on this?
We do need a motion to take it to the city council.
Recommend it to the city council?
I move we recommend item three point one, decided.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call. Chair Baso?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin? Commissioner Dinan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Altherman?
Yes.
Moving on, Planning Commission comments? Do any commissioners have comments?
Very impressive.
Yeah, go ahead and open it back up.
Okay, we can reopen the public comment. Oh, okay. We will close the public comment. Okay. Oh, is she back? Okay. Public comment period is closed. We're going to move on to Planning Commission comments.
Just bring in person document.
I agree, that was pretty good, I did have actually a couple of other things, I've been. Recently, I participated in an online presentation, this is just information I would like to share with the commission and the public. As you know, the North County Corridor Phase One is going to be starting soon, I was involved in an online presentation from the county. Concerning the start of construction, that project will be going out to bid soon. Construction, formal construction is intended to start in the spring. And that's going to be a lot of traffic disruptions, a lot of construction stuff going on. I just kind of wanted to make everybody aware of that and how that will impact especially South and Southeast Riverbank. So, once we get there, be prepared for detours and other such. Such niceties.
Thank you. County referral correspondence or information?
Good evening Chair Baso, members of the Planning Commission, we do have one item tonight that was referred from Stanislaus County. It's a use permit application for Horizon Landscaping, it looks like they're proposing a wholesale nursery at thirteen sixty-seven Crawford Road. If you're familiar with the area, it's just between Coffee and Oakdale Road. Kind of where the, the old Crawford dead ends on the unincorporated side. So typically the county will refer projects like this that are within the city's sphere of influence. Per our agreement or per the city's agreement with the county. We do have the ability to impose certain conditions, or if the use is. Not compatible with our general plan, we could kind of identify that and respond back to the county. So just wanted to kind of make you guys aware of that. I don't particularly see an issue with this proposed business. But I'd like to open it up if the commission has any specific comments or concerns with it. And you can let me know.
Do we want to? Ask any questions on that now?
I'll just clarify, I looked at the address on this, that's, that's in the section of Crawford Road that no longer directly connects back into the city, correct?
So. That's correct, yes.
So it's. I mean, I get it, we'll eventually be backing up to them, but I think at this time it's probably not a conflict.
And people who live in that area, they get notified by the county of any of the permits or changes that are happening?
Yeah, that's correct, the county has their own notification process, it's very similar to ours, where they will notify the surrounding neighbors. There will be a public hearing that their planning commission ultimately has to make a decision on their application.
Okay, so we don't need to notify them ourselves. Good, any other questions? Thank you. Moving on, staff comments?
Good evening again, yeah, I just wanted to go over a couple items that we saw, I believe at our last meeting, Heritage Two subdivision. And the Turpin Avenue. Exception and parcel map were both forwarded on to the city council. And both projects received approval from the city.
And both projects received approval from the city council. So both of those will be moving forward. Heritage Two, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but they're actually already grading their property, kind of trying to get ahead of the winner. So if you see any action out there, that, that's what that is. Also, just wanted to point out, in terms of future applications of this planning commission may see, we do have kind of an exciting new application on Patterson Road. The vacant property just east of Dutch Brothers. So we received a new application. I'll call it a shopping center, although it's not really a shopping center. It will have two kind of anchor major tenants and then two drive-through restaurants or fast food restaurants within there. At this time, we don't. We should know pretty soon, though, who that major tenant will be. Also, kind of on a residential or apartments multifamily side, we received an apartment application at Morel. Uh, this is the property. You'll notice a lot of ducks kind of congregate out there. It's a triangle, odd-shaped piece. So we did receive, I believe it's a forty-eight unit apartment complex and private park. So we'll be processing that application. You guys will see it pretty soon here.
Right by the canal?
Yes, adjacent to the canal. I believe if you're looking north of this property, it would be, be between Jackson and Howard.
Interesting.
That concludes my comments for tonight. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, any questions? No? Well, that concludes our planning commission meeting. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for November nineteenth at six P M. Thank you.